That's fine.
Everybody's green, Rebecca, you're still red. You're not green. Yay.
You're on.
Thank you. Okay, welcome. I'm going to open the Board of Selectmen meeting on December 23rd at 6:30 PM. Will you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. On tonight's agenda, we're beginning the meeting with a public hearing on the transfer of an off-premise package store license. Following that, we will resume our regular agenda with a public comment. I don't think we have any department comments tonight, correct?
Not that I've been made aware.
And then under discussion and possible vote, we have the YMCA summer program at Bagnell Elementary School, information on a pay-as-you-throw program, possible for Groveland, the FY26 Capital Improvement Plan. My suggestion, I have some green tips for ways to reduce trash, a licensed non-renewal certification, that's new language, and following that, appointments, resignations, approval of minutes. All done, finished business, town administrator, and selectman time. So, I'm going to now open the public hearing at 6:30 PM on the application for transfer of an off-premises package store all-alcoholic beverages license from Route 97 Quick Pick Incorporated, DBA Route 97 Liquors, 908D Salem Street, Groveland, Massachusetts, to, and I cannot pronounce the first name.
Fenni and J Corp.
Fenni.
And J Corp.
Okay, Fenni and J Corp. Route 97 Liquors, 908D Salem Street, Groveland, and another first name, a long one.
Niles Kumar.
Niles Kumar, A. Patel, is the proposed manager. And in your packet, you should have all of the paperwork that was provided, I believe it is in order. Is there anyone from the public that is attending tonight that wanted to comment on this transfer?
Point of order.
Yes.
We need to vote to open a public hearing.
Oh, okay, I can do that. Can I have a motion from the board to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing regarding 908D Salem Street, Fenni and J Corporation.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, thank you for that correction. And now the public hearing is open. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this transfer?
Good evening, Board. My name is Matthew Porter. I'm the attorney for Fenni and J Corp. So as you stated before you, this is the application for the transfer of the all-alcohol package store license for Route 97 Liquors. Before you, in person is Niles Kumar Patel. Mr. Patel is the 100% shareholder of Fenni and J Corp. He's also the proposed license manager. He has worked at this location and helped manage it since 2014, so over a decade now, and has an opportunity to actually purchase the business. So, from an outward perspective, there'll be no changes, no changes to the hours, the structure of the business. Obviously, a very experienced operator in a very familiar store, who's just going to be taking over the operation. He is alcohol tip certified. All employees will be required to be alcohol tip certified as well. The lease is in order, all the paperwork should be in order. With that, I can certainly answer any questions that the board may have. Mr. Patel can as well.
Thank you. Do board members have questions?
No.
Mr. Watson?
Nope.
Nope, everything seems to be.
I don't think we have any questions, and I thank you for your summation of the transfer, that it is a person who's been working in there for a decade and is now becoming the business owner. Congratulations. And can we have a motion to approve the transfer of this license?
I'll make a motion. We approve the transfer of the license for Fenni and J Corporation, 908D Salem Street, Groveland, Mass. Is there anything else I have to?
I'll second it.
That's sufficient. Any further discussion? There be none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous with one absent. And congratulations. And second, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing at 6:34?
Close enough. Second that.
Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing? It's unanimous with one absent. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
And thank you for speaking. We appreciate it. Have a nice evening. Okay. Okay, next on our agenda is public comment, and I see Joe DeMora is here, and I heard that you do have a public comment for us tonight, or am I wrong? Am I right or wrong?
Well.
Well, since you asked.
Well, thank you. I had submitted a request for a public comment, but didn't expect it to be tonight, but.
Oh.
As.
We take them as they come.
Selectman Watson knows I'm never lost for words, so. Nine Cherry Tree Lane, Groveland, Mass.
Well, wait, there's a time limit, you understand?
Yeah. Town moderator, just want to let you know, I attended a recording the other day with Stephanie Bartlett, who operates the newsroom for What's Up Groveland. Had an opportunity to share some information about the town meeting. I plan on doing a couple of roundtable discussions with Rebecca here at Town Hall. We're scheduling for February 19th and February 26th, 6 o'clock, about 45 minutes Wednesday night. The purpose is just to bring out some changes that I'd like to make to the town meeting, and also to discuss a couple of key issues. Not all the issues that will be at town meeting, but some really important ones, like the accessory dwelling units, and perhaps, which could come up at the town meeting, and also the MBTA Communities Act. I think it's a good idea to, for people to pay attention to what's going on at the meetings, but I realize that people don't attend meetings, or watch them, or read minutes. So I'm trying to do a little bit of supplement to that by bringing out some issues. And the changes are pretty basic. We're going to be using a PowerPoint presentation, so people will be looking at the warrants instead of looking at the me and the people at the town meeting. The town meeting is April 28th, on Monday. People should be there at 7 o'clock, but actually, I hope they get there earlier, because the worst thing that could happen is if people learn about an important controversial issue at town meeting. They should be paying attention to your meetings, at other meetings, and reading minutes, and then hopefully the roundtable, and what we can do with programming at WhatsApp will give people an opportunity to learn about the issues before town meeting. And that's the purpose, so. So thank you for your time. That's what I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, and now we're moving along. As far as I know, we don't have any department comments or updates, so next will be our discussion and possible vote. We have a couple of documents in our packet regarding the YMCA summer program at the Bagnell School. And I open up the board floor for discussion of this program. Have you had time to review the information provided?
Madam Chair, I do have Tracy Fuller with the YMCA here, YMCA president this evening. She discussed a little bit more about the collaboration that we're looking to proceed with.
Okay, and what was the full name again?
Tracy Fuller.
Tracy Fuller, thank you. Yes, if you wouldn't mind using the podium. That's okay, it's because it won't go through the television. Thank you so much. Great.
Hi, my name is Tracy Fuller. I live at 97 Beachwood Drive in Haverhill, Mass. In your packets, you see information about our summer camp program. We are a provider, so I'm the executive director of the Haverhill YMCA. We serve as part of the YMCA of the North Shore, so we serve 26 communities, 22 in Massachusetts, four in New Hampshire. And summer camp is one of our programs that we have that has grown exponentially, especially post-COVID, where you see more families going to work. We do a lot of programs that are instrumental, that partner with public schools. And so Rebecca had reached out to say, could there be an opportunity to look at a summer program that we could do at Bagnell School? So we currently provide, in Haverhill, before and after-school care programs for over 500 children. And then we have a summer camp that is a true traditional summer camp program called Tricklin Falls. It's in East Kingston, New Hampshire, and we bring kids up to that camp, all the way from Newburyport, Haverhill, Amesbury, sorry, I got a bit of a cold, we were talking about that, New Hampshire, Plaster, New Hampshire. So those that, kids that want like sun and bugs and all the great things that a camp provides, it's right on the Powar River. But we also have a lot of kids that like that indoor camp experience. So we actually run two summer camp programs that are in schools, and what you have in front of you is an example of what that type of camp can be. So we know we have a lot of families who work. They need care at 7:00 in the morning, they need care till 6:00 at night. They need opportunities to have, for their kids to have great experiences, make friends, do different things than they would during the public school day, but also opportunities to problem solve, to team build, and that's what our summer camp programs do. Also fostering in the values of the YMCA, such as caring, honesty, respect, and responsibility. So we are excited. We know that Bagnell is all about the giraffe, so we had a little giraffe in there, but we think we could provide a really great opportunity. And I think one of the great things about the YMCA is that no one is turned away due to inability to pay. And the fact that the YMCA provides scholarships in financial, what we call flex pricing, we kind of stepped away from calling it scholarshiping, but for any family who makes under $110,000 a year. So, you know, that if families are looking for care and needing care, they feel that pricing is a barrier. We want to make sure that they're able to come. And one of the things we also will do, so that's for the indoor camp, if there's young kids in Groveland that are looking for an outdoor camp experience, our traditional day camp, our goal is to have a bus stop right at Bagnell that would bring them right up to camp, so they would have that traditional outdoor camp experience.
Wow.
Do you have any questions about camp? And I can, I'm happy to talk about all of the work that we do regarding youth mental health and having one of our inclusion specialists that would be part of the camp structure, our relationship with Department of Public Health and licensed camp programs, because this is definitely not unfamiliar territory to us at the Y.
Do you know, like if you, if we do the one at Bagnell, I mean, it looks fantastic, would you limit the number of participants, or how do you allocate your staffing?
So we ideally wouldn't. So Department of Public Health gives you kind of a green light to have, as long as we have space to be able to operate, and as long as we can find staffing. One of the things that Rebecca and I spoke about is for anyone who had been employed previously at the camp here, if they had an interest, they wanted to be a YMCA employee. We start our Y summer camp employees at $17 an hour, and that's for, you know, young camp staff that are interested in starting in a role at camp. And it just goes up from there, because we know that working at a camp type of program for 40 hours a week is a lot. So that's one of the things that we have done, is invested in some of the camp salaries. But we also know that we have to make sure we're maintaining ratios. So six and seven-year-olds for DPH is one to five, and then one to 10. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't limit, we actually, our Camp Tricklin Falls, our highest week last year, we had about 370 campers, and that's grown exponentially. So our goal wouldn't be to limit, our goal would be, how can we make sure that we're serving the needs of families in Groveland to the best of our ability?
That's good. And so if you don't need to limit, I guess, and that my second question maybe wouldn't even be necessary, is that, you know, would preference be given to students in the town of Groveland over other people that are playing? But if you don't limit it, that would be a non-issue?
No, but what we always, but what we can do is that we can do, again, to do, build up a little bit of momentum is you would probably have students from Bagnell being able to register before any other students could, so. Because we also know that, I mean, there's towns that don't have any recreation programs and have limited summer programs as well. But again, our goal in this, with this program would be, as we're partnering with the town of Groveland, would be to serve families in Groveland. So again, not that we want to create something that's so great that everyone else wants, that's a good thing, but we obviously, our goal would be at first to say, how can we best serve children and families who live in Groveland?
Great, thank you. Okay, other members, questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Questions?
Sounds great.
No, I was just happy to see this. I love the way this looks. I love the idea of having the outdoor kids or the indoor, whatever they prefer. I know your program's great. YMCA has a great reputation, so I love this collaboration, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, and one thing just to add is that we would pay to use the space, because we see collaborations are true partnerships, so it's not just us using it. So we've confirmed the amount of custodial costs, so we would make sure to be paying that back to the school department as well as paying for usage of our space. So, I mean, again, we see that as a true partnership, so it wouldn't just be the Y's just coming in to use a program, but how can we also be supporting the town of Groveland as well?
Yeah, I mean, this is so much better than I thought we'd end up with when it was put before us that the old summer camp wasn't going to be able to run the way it had been run. We just, it wasn't working, and we didn't have the staffing in place that was there before. So this is an exceptional replacement, so I think that.
I appreciate that.
I think parents are going to be pretty excited about this and grateful, and the other side of it is there is the additional camp. So maybe they start just using the Groveland one, but maybe the next year they say, oh, you know, I want to do a week up at the away camp, so that's another.
Not overnight camp, let me just say that. No, so away, but not like too far away, but yes, I'm, but.
Yeah.
No, absolutely. And I do think there are, we see a variety of kids that have, again, that are looking for that more adventurous, and maybe some older kids would want that, you know, where it's archery, it's, there's a climbing tower, it's a lot more, you know, we do a lot of paddle boarding and kayaking. So again, it's trying to give both experiences, but we do know, you know, the great thing about summer camp is that kids come in and they get to, they don't realize they're learning as they're learning. And parents also feel that sense of, they want to know that they have a safe place that their children can be, so that they're able to continue working and doing what they need to do, so.
Great. So I'll ask our town administrator now. At this point, the board doesn't seem to have questions. I'm anticipating that they're going to vote. Do you want to vote to just approve it as presented?
I would like to move forward with a vote, so that we can work with the YMCA, so that they can refine their flyer and their advertisement, so that they can get it out accordingly. And I know that they begin early enrollment, so I would like to make sure that we're ready to go for the January, February timeframe, so.
So would the motion be to approve it as presented, subject to the town administrator negotiating the user fee or whatever you want to label it?
If that's what you'd like to do?
Well, I think we don't have that before us, so that'd be up to you.
Okay.
Yes, okay, so, how about, I can't look at Mark anymore for a moment, he just starts laughing.
I'll make a motion that we, oh God, I don't remember half of the stuff you just said.
Well, we're approving the program as presented.
Approve the YMCA summer program at the Bagnell School, and, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I'll second that. Okay, she's seconding it as.
If you had to repeat that, you'd get the same thing?
Yeah, no, it definitely wouldn't come out the same.
We're not going to ask for a repeat. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It is unanimous, one absent. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming down and us being able to put a face to the program. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So next up is a pay-as-you-throw presentation. I think you've met Brian before. He's been working with the Trash and Recycling Committee, helping us navigate through a lot of information. We've hit him with a lot of questions, and we've been super soaked with a lot of information within our trash and recycling meetings. I guess we've been meeting for well over a year now. But I wanted to have Brian come in and try and present some information to the board, and also out to the public via our select board meeting, because I think that while this survey is out there and the public is considering it, good night, thank you, it'd be a great opportunity to kind of give more information about trash and recycling in the state of Massachusetts. What are other towns doing? Why do we have to keep changing things? You know, these are all really good questions, you know? And they need to be answered, and so I think one step towards answering, and sometimes answers aren't as concrete as you'd like, sometimes the answer is, well, it depends on what you want to do. So we do have choices on this whole issue of trash recycling carts, but with those choices, you know, there's pros and cons. And this is our first step towards trying to provide information and education via Brian out to the rest of the board and to the public. So I guess it's up to you, Brian. Do you want questions as you go, or questions at the end, or?
Let's do questions at the end.
Okay, that's what I thought would be good, too. We're on the same page.
Cool.
Okay, so take it away.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Yep, so I'm Brian Walsh, I'm the Municipal Assistance Coordinator. So I work with Groveland and other towns in my district of Northeast District 2. I'm also here with a colleague, Ron Cochrane, and on the calls also are Kathy Mirza, the branch chief for the municipal waste reduction at Mass DEP. So yeah, I guess I just wanted to give some context on this program that we're talking about. So the last few months, I've been meeting as part of a technical assistance grant with the Trash and Recycling Committee, and we've been talking about this pay-as-you-throw program and grant funding that goes with it from the DEP. And they went forward and proposed a 35-gallon cart option at the last, a couple of town meetings ago. And yeah, so this was kind of a little more information on pay-as-you-throw generally, and then what some other towns are doing. So you can see, general high level for pay-as-you-throw, I'll just read it from the screen, is households are charged based on the amount of trash they dispose, and this model encourages waste reduction and recycling by making disposal costs directly proportional to the volume of waste generated. So it's tying the generation of the waste to the cost for the households. If you go to the next slide, and so as I move through this kind of presentation, and this is an abbreviated version of what I've kind of talked to the committee about, so of course, there might be a lot of questions at the end. But each of these three things we'll kind of see in different ways are the benefits of the pay-as-you-throw program. So first off, going quickly, from the environmental perspective, fundamentally, this is a waste reduction strategy. So that's a key piece of it, is having the emissions conversation and how it relates to Massachusetts state goals for the Zero Waste Plan to achieve a 30% waste reduction on the state level by 2030. So that's one of the main reasons why the DEP is providing grants like this. Secondly, would be the fiscal nature of this as it relates to municipality. And I'll get into a little bit more at the end of this, but there's a major risk alleviation by tying waste generated to bag revenue from the pay-as-you-throw program, because it's not leaving the municipality vulnerable to all of the sudden having to pay way more for disposal than they were anticipating, because their disposal costs were so high, which can lead to some tax override situations. And I'll touch back on that at the end. And then finally, is this idea of the fairness and equity in the program, trying to move to this model, move trash to this model that we're familiar with, with utilities like water, heat, electricity, that the more you generate and consume of something, the more cost associated there is to that. So then passing some of that cost on to the generator. So people putting out two bins of, two bins of trash don't pay the same as someone putting out one bin of trash. Next slide. So generally, on a, this is what kind of gives a high-level view of communities in our state, sorry, that have pay-as-you-throw programs in place. So you can see, the red are ones that are drop-off communities, meaning they're bringing their pay-as-you-throw bags to a drop-off location. And the ones in green would be curbside programs, which Groveland is exploring, and more and more communities are moving to curbside programs. I was going to say curbside, I'm moving to automated programs, which is where the trash truck's coming and automatically picking up the truck. And then so we'll get into a little bit of, for those green, what the DEP kind of thinks is the gold standard and provides the most grant funding for, which is the 35-gallon cart pay-as-you-throw program, so going next.
Oh, we're back.
Okay, so for some context, that, of those who have those 48 curbside, the ones that are 35-gallon cart communities are the ones listed on the screen. So this is, Groveland's not, wouldn't be the first town to be exploring this option. And like Kathleen mentioned, there isn't a one-size-fits-all kind of idea, and okay, just because you're adopting pay-as-you-throw or 35-gallon, that you have to structure your program, and there's only, not only one way to do it. So the recycling, the Trash and Recycling Committee has proposed what they found to be the option they want, propose Groveland move forward with, which is a 35-gallon cart and the option to lease an additional 35-gallon cart. So next two slides, I have some examples of what you see in other towns. So here in, over in Long Meadow, and as you see, Groveland's kind of in between these two that I'll show. So they have a program that is a curbside, curbside program with 35-gallon cart. And then anything beyond that would be those, would be an overflow bag on the side that would have to be purchased at a local retailer and placed outside. But the 35-gallon cart is paid through, out of the tax base. And going to the next slide. And a little bit of a different option is something like Malden, where they give, the 35-gallon carts provided, but even within those 35-gallon carts, you would still have to place a pay-as-you-throw bag. But the option being, if you want to place, you could purchase a sticker that kind of says, I paid for the amount equivalent of a purchase of those bags. But, so it's more stringent in the sense, you're still paying for all of the trash, paying for a pay-as-you-throw bag for the entirety of the cart. And then so Groveland, the proposal that the committee went with is kind of somewhere in the middle of these in the sense of the first 35-gallon would be provided out of the tax base, so there would be no charge for this initial 35 gallons for the households. And then beyond that, there's an option to lease an additional 35-gallon cart. I believe the number was for $175. That would then, pay-as-you-throw bags would then have to go inside that. And that structures in a way that still receives the full amount for the Mass DEP grant funding, which I think for Groveland ends up being around $60,000 in grant funding for that. So if you go to the next one. And I just kind of wanted to, just to kind of like paint the picture again of why this conversation's important in Massachusetts, and why it's just now coming out of nowhere. And also recognizing that it's understandable, it's obviously a big change over the years from going from unlimited trash, then to a trash limit, that now to something like this. But the idea, a little context behind that being, the world we live in and the landscape of trash and disposal in the state looks very different now than it has in the last decade, and it's going to continue to look different. So this is a graph of our in-state landfill capacity. So this kind of model is based what the Zero Waste Plan is based off of, because we're recognizing this shrinking capacity. And then, as anyone who has been looking at, working on our contracting for our disposal costs over the last few years, this is a big piece why it's starting to get more and more expensive to dispose of trash in the state. We're already, I think, the, one of, if not the most expensive state to tip trash in, in the country. So as our capacity dwindles, every time we go out for a new contract every five years, the odds that the disposal rates are only going to likely increase as this situation kind of unfolds. So the next one. And then just finally, just kind of tie back to that municipal piece of this is, that I think is one of those things that's hard to see, because the benefit of the pay-as-you-throw is just hoping something doesn't happen, as opposed to a tangible benefit. But a real benefit of pay-as-you-throw is that, so without, in a non-pay-as-you-throw system, the town of Groveland's paying X amount, I think next year it's close to $100 per ton in tipping fees, and then they have no idea what the disposal of the residents in Groveland will be. So say they set aside $500,000 for disposal fees, and then all of the sudden, Groveland produces more trash than expected, and it's a $600,000 bill, then this is a situation where a tax override comes into play. And so the way pay-as-you-throw helps alleviate that is, the pay-as-you-throw bag revenue is now going to offset the collection cost, so you know that you're always going to have enough funds to pay for the rising disposal costs, so avoiding a situation like this, which Groveland had a few examples of, as you can see on the screen. So that, I know I went really quick. So that, I know I went really quick, and that's a very high-level, kind of like speed run through Pay As You Throw, and why we do it, and why it's important for the state, and why it's something that we provide grant funding for. Yeah, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Okay, is it the board okay with taking questions from the general audience right now first?
Yep.
Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Brian. Joe Demore, Nine Cherry Tree Lane. Could either you or Kathy, because she's really good with budgets, explain to us precisely what component of the tax base is tied into trash pickup that if we do not convert to automated pickup, will cause us a never-ending cycle over the years of tax override requests at town meeting? And as a reminder, this issue probably will not be at town meeting. This issue, the final decision is vested with the Select Board. That's why the survey is important to help direct the final policies. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I guess I'll answer briefly, and then if Kathleen wants to add anything. But I think two main, at least pieces from the, what's Trash and Hauling Contract's going to look like, is it's going to be broken off into two pieces. There's going to be the collection fee, which Groveland knows when they sign the contract that they're paying half a million dollars in just the trucks coming to pick up the trash. So that's non-variable. And then there's the variable element of it being tipping, the hauling piece of it, which is, say, $100 per ton for every, for the household tonnage that the hauler's picking up. So then that's variable, depending on how much waste Groveland as a town generates, then the town's responsible for paying that piece of the hauling contract. So, and if Kathleen wants to talk more about the tax perspective, but, yes, yeah, so essentially, it's a, half of it is a non-variable piece in the collection costs, but then every year the disposal costs is variable. So that's the concern of, without a Pay As You Throw program, is you're not generating any revenue based off of generation. It's only what was set aside in the tax base to pay for it. So there's never a guarantee that, there's always a possibility that the tonnage, especially if a town's not focusing on waste reduction and not having that conversation, and not, doesn't have a Pay As You Throw program, there's that possibility that the disposal costs will be higher than what was set aside for collection. And I'll have Kathleen, if you want to add anything.
And Brian's right. And then I'm going to defer to our town administrator, who's much more expert than I am at this point, having been going to these online hauler meetings for better part of a year, maybe. So it's a budget buster, in a nutshell. The cost of trash is outpacing 2.5% by four times, perhaps, maybe more than four times. And one of the biggest components is, is the tonnage, but also is the curbside, the huge amount of manual labor it's requiring right now to get out of the truck at every house and load in different sizes of bins and all. So we're trying to jump ahead and join the crowd with the automated. And that will, you know, lower or lower future costs of the curbside pickup, so that we can preserve that curbside pickup as a service for the town. But the cost in general, I think, I defer to Rebecca. She's been very involved in the hauling side of it, and what other towns are paying, and she's very much up to speed on what's out there and what we might expect if we're able to transfer to an automated pickup, which is what we're also going for, other than just cart-sized decisions. There's, if we get the carts, then we can go to the automated pickup. And if we don't get the carts, we can't go to automated pickup. And our goal is not to make people pay for the initial carts, that we're going to try and provide that. And there is some hope that if we're able to do sizing properly, we'll be able to get some grant help. And I'll let Rebecca fill in any more information on future hauling costs and things.
I think you definitely kind of put it into perspective. I think the biggest thing is, again, that there's a hauling cost and there's a disposal per tonnage cost. So currently, in our contract for the fiscal year, we have $542,000 that we have set. That is a fixed cost that we must pay the hauler to haul trash and recycling. Then we have our tipping fee, which is the $95 currently. So that all depends on the tonnage. So we don't necessarily know exactly what that is going to be every month. So what we do from a budgetary's perspective is that we take the highest month, or we take an average, then we multiply it by what we know is going to be the tipping fee, and then we estimate that to be the cost of what we have for our trash. Then we have our recycling. So for recycling, it's a little bit more complicated, but it is less costly than the trash. But again, from a budgetary perspective, having fixed costs is a lot easier to budget for when you, when you know what those are. Not having fixed costs can be a little bit more of a challenge when trying to narrow down a budget allocation. Sometimes we might be right on the money, other times we might be a little under, a little over. There's no exact real science to it, so it can become a little bit more complicated. But that's all based upon what the homeowners are doing in terms of their tonnage. But the next year, the contract for fiscal year 2026, we're looking at a collection per year of $606,000 and a disposal per ton of $103. And upon talking with the Trash and Recycling Committee and looking at our options as we were looking to go out to bid, we found that haulers are moving away from manual collection because it is too costly for themselves. So in talking with the haulers just informally, they said that we could probably save up to $100,000 to $200,000 off of our hauling fixed cost if we were to move towards an automated system pickup, which is what most communities are doing. Some are actually not even bidding on projects that are manual collection, because it's just too costly for them in-house. That being said, we were just exploring those options. But again, it's not to say that the trash budget's going to go down, per se. There's always going to be an expense side of things, but it could reduce it, and it could grow at a slower pace, which would allow us to adjust accordingly.
Yes. Any members of the board have questions on this? I mean, we're trying to, trying to give you like a nine-month overview in one evening, and I know that it's hard, and I know we have a survey out there, and I know that it's probably new news to some people, that we just cannot continue to go forward as we've been doing. So we are seeking the input from households. I think the survey response is over 200 now. We'd really love to hear from everybody as much as possible about, especially about your current habits, because we know this is a big change. And we want to make sure that we do everything we can to make sure that it's achievable and attainable. I mean, I've seen the comments, people are worried that people start throwing trash all over the place. People are worried that they won't be able to throw out their trash. I understand. People are worried about, how much is this going to cost me if I have to buy or rent lease an additional bin? All of these are good questions, valid concerns. We want to hear them. We want to take them into account. We are, I think, for the first time in Groveland, you have a committee that's dedicated towards just doing as much research as possible, supported by good people from the state that are bringing us the wealth of information. And we're trying to say, okay, not just for the next one year, two years, three years, how about, how about five years? What can we do that we can work with for five years, and that, at the five years, we can pivot forward to the next five years? And you saw the slide on the landfills. A lot of information that I've learned by being on this committee is brand-new to me as well. So I can appreciate people doing the survey, being surprised by what's happened and what has to change. For example, I didn't know that we weren't really legally allowed to throw out fabrics and things like that. It's against the law. But we've been working, and Rebecca's done a great job getting those visible containers out there. I think everybody can see one. Most people can. By one of the roads you drive on, you'll see clothing, pillowcases, dish towels, things you don't want to donate to anybody, but you would want to get rid of. You can divert to these bins. And we're going to keep working on those kind of diversions, giving you as many opportunities as possible to take things out of your trash stream. It's not our goal to force something on the town that is not sustainable. So we're trying to be realistic, and we're trying to be careful, and we're trying to bring forward as much information as possible. And especially to my fellow board members, if there's anything you wondered about, anything that you want to know more about, I ask you to please let us know. I know Becky has offered her services to help do some statistical demographics with the survey data that I think will help make it meaningful to us, and I appreciate that. Any input or things you hear from other people. I know people will call you, probably before me, because I'm on the committee, so they think, well, she's in favor, but I'm going to call someone else with my concern. But honestly, I'm open to concerns and criticism as much as the next person on this board, is we want to hear from everybody and try to make the best possible decision. That's the overall goal. So, yes?
Sorry, I'd like to just say, too, I, so, again, my name's Ron Cochran. I'm a regional planner with Mass DEP. Brian's my colleague. I did want to commend your staff in the Recycling Committee. Just to put it into context, we deal with cities and towns all over Massachusetts on a daily basis. Our job is municipal waste reduction. So one of the things that we're tasked with is, we're the data collectors for how much we throw away and how much we recycle across the whole state. So we have the advantage of zooming out and looking down at all the cities and towns and their makeup, and seeing, you know, what people are doing on a day-to-day basis. What I want to commend is, I was shocked to see that Groveland, being a smaller town, had a recycling and, or a waste reduction committee, first of all, because there are towns that are orders of magnitude larger than yours that don't even go that far. So I like to say, you know, I command you for that effort. The other thing is, Rebecca and I also work together on the contract negotiation. So this is the, this is the little thing that's smoldering in the corner that needs to be addressed, you know, down the road. And Rebecca attends our Best Practices webinars that we conduct on a monthly basis. Because again, as a town administrator, you have to have your hat, your hand in so many different areas that you may not have expertise in, and she's reached out to us and been super active in, you know, getting the best. That's what we do. Again, we, we focus on what other cities and towns do. We try to bring, we try to whittle that down and give it a digestible, you know, overview. Just a couple more things is what I've heard. A little bit of context on, we, there are about 160 other communities across Massachusetts that do, that also do Pay As You Throw. So Brian gave a few examples that were kind of in that sweet spot, that were close to your makeup. But just know that you're joining over half of the entire state of Massachusetts and growing every year. Another thing is, this sort of 35-gallon cart, right? It just seems a little bit nebulous, right? Why, where did we come up with that size? Again, we have the data, so we see what, on average, people generally throw away. And one of the things that we've seen is the behavioral changes when people have a larger cart as opposed to a smaller cart, and generally, waste is reduced. You sort of fit into what, you right-size into what you have available to you. And I think one of the toughest things to do is, like, on the day-to-day basis, when you come home from work, the last thing you want to think about is anything complicated related to trash. You just want to get rid of it, make sure it's not there the next day. But on a state level and on a waste reduction level, we have to spend a really long time thinking about these things, so that these decisions that you make now, that become five-year and 10-year decisions, don't come back and really hurt sting later on. So, you know, that's some, just some context. And again, I'd be happy to answer any other questions. I manage the Pay As You Throw grant for the state, so I speak frequently with all of these cities and towns. So again, we're happy to take any questions that you guys have.
This is your opportunity, if you have any questions, like on cart sizes. Yes, go ahead.
Just some comments. This is an important issue for the town, and I think, two things should happen. I think we should hold public hearings here, here at the town hall, to answer questions that people have. I think that, again, important, important issue. This should, we should bring this before the voters at a, at a town election, to see how they, how they feel. Not at a town meeting, at a ballot box at a town, town election. And looking, the presentation that was done a couple weeks ago, it had the three, the three barrels out here. The 35-gallon is way too small. It, for a, for a, be fine for one, two people, but you get, you get a family of even husband, wife, and two kids, that's not enough. And if you, if you look at what people are recycling, there's an awful lot of people that are putting a lot of, a lot of things in the recycling bin or next to it every week. And so I don't, I, I think a larger container for recycling, but also trash, you need, the 64-gallon container would, would work. I don't think the 35, the 35-gallon container would work for a family of four people. And you're using that as an average. And if you're using a 35, what happens if you, if you're away on a trash day and it doesn't get out? Now, next week, you got, you got two. And you're away on vacation? If you miss a week, you need the extra. You need, you need the 64. And, and I know, if Rebecca, if I was, heard it correctly, was it $100,000 to $200,000, $150,000 to $200,000 savings? Is that, is that going to come off of the, come off of the budget item, line item for, for trash? Or is that going to be used for something else? So you take it off of there, but put it onto something else? That's all I got, my notes here. But it is something that's very important. Town people should, should be able to weigh in on it at a, at public hearings, and not just one, more than that. And also, a vote at a town election to see the way the townspeople want to put this forward. And in somewhere along the line, in, in this paperwork, if I read it, I mean, there's so much of it, I probably won't be able to find it right away. But something to the effect that if you use more, if you, if you throw away more, it, people subsidizing, something, might paraphrase incorrectly? You're going to make me go through and find that. Residents pay only the amount of trash they generate. Households generating less trash pay less than households generating more. Well, it's part of being a community. Single people, a husband, wife, and no kids, they're subsidizing the schools. So it works both ways. So it just, something to think about there, and I can't find that the way it was written. But again, it, it, it should go to, it shouldn't be decided by the five people here. It should be decided by the townspeople and at a, at a secret ballot, at a, at a town election. Not at a, not at a town meeting where you, where you, one side or the other stacks the town meeting, and it's been done before to get their, their project passed. It should be objective. I'm all set. I know.
Good. Mark?
No, the only thing I, I mean, I just, we've got to get the word out to more people. I mean, every weekend, I'm talking to people, and they're like, what are you talking about? What's going on? I'm like, so, I just, more or less, just got to keep spreading the word to get the feedback from the people and just go forward from that point, but.
Yep. Good. Thank you. I heard the word. And Becky?
So just a few points, kind of to resonate what was already said, but I think automated, automated pickup seems like a no-brainer. It's 2024, like, everything's automated, cars can drive by themselves. It just seems like something that should be happening. Hearing about how it alleviates unpredictability of the trash budget by having some controls in place, that makes sense to me, just as, to be financially responsible. The smaller carts puts everyone on the same level playing field. I know that can be tough for maybe larger families, but at the same time, educating yourself and educating residents on being thoughtful of what you throw away is a huge part of this. And I know, I think, we all kind of take it for granted. You brought it up. I have something, I just want to throw it away. It's a change in behavior, and people are uncomfortable with that. I think about when plastic bags went away, and I had to bring my own bag to the supermarket. It probably took me about a solid month before I remembered, bring your bags in the store. Because I'd always have, I'd always get the paper. always have, I'd always get the paper, and I'd get mad at myself for not bringing the bags. I never forget my bags. I always have a stash in the car. So, my behavior has changed. You see every, most people bring their own bags to the supermarket now. So, it's a similar thing to that, but educating is key.
I agree with all the comments, with the one exception. I think unless the select board votes as a majority to put something this complicated onto some type of a ballot question, I can't imagine how you would even ask it so that people would understand what they're being asked. You know, and I point to the water rates and the electric rates as examples of, you know, kinds of services, utilities that are based on usage that have had to change over time. We used to get the month of December for free when I first moved here. Yes, I'll get to you in a second. Thank you. But we don't anymore because electricity's expensive, and there's a, I don't know how many people study their electric bill. I do, being the numbers geek. But, you know, there's a power surcharge. So, when the more expensive power sources are being dispatched, we're paying for it, you know? In the heat of the summer, you're paying more per kilowatt hour than you are on those cooler autumn days. And in the dead cold of winter during those freezes, again, that, that surcharge is kicking in, and your electric bill will go up accordingly. So, there's a built-in way for them to collect that additional marginal cost for when the amount of usage goes beyond what's anticipated. We have put out a survey. I'm very open to having public hearings at the beginning of our meetings. I don't know that you have to call them public hearings, but we've done this on other issues in town that people are interested in, and I'd be more than willing to allow, you know, a reasonable amount of time at the beginning of agendas for public comments, and let people just have their say, put their questions out, and we can start gathering information that way. I think that's another good way to do it, and people can certainly use their write-in option to the board as well to raise a concern if they think we're not considering something that's important to them. I certainly want to hear about it. We're not going to rush into this, but we are going to make a decision at some point. We have to. We need to look at the contract we're on, and the escalating cost is, is well beyond our budget. And I know there's been a lot of question about an underwrite. Let me just point out, for the record, being someone who's followed overrides and underrides in town, the one time this, this town went ahead and did an underwrite, we were back in for an override a year and a half later. So, I'm very wary of underrides, of giving people the false impression that they've saved money just to take it back again the next time costs go up. What I will say is you will not double pay for your trash. We can't put more into the town budget than the cost that we identify that's going to be in the tax rate, period. If the additional money that is freed up through, for example, automated pickup, if that money is not put towards another use, and there's no intention here to automatically shove it into another use, we're going to do our budgeting as we have been doing it in a very fiscally responsible manner, it's possible that we won't have to tax to the full amount of the 2.5%. Currently, we're riding right up to the cap. We're right within, what, $5,000 of the amount we're allowed. So, we've extraordinarily tight budget. Thankfully, we have an exceptional financial staff here headed by our town administrator, who helps all the departments stay within this very tight budget. And as a result, we now have reserves for the town to draw on. So, public hearings, yes. Surveys, yes. Public input to members of the board, yes. Please talk to us. Ask us your questions. A ballot vote is a very blind vote, and it's meant for certain things, and one of them being an override of the tax rate, and this is not an override, and nor is it an underwrite. I want to be honest with people. Would you like to say? It's Brian Lynch, right?
Correct.
Okay. Hi.
How you doing?
Good, thanks.
Brian Lynch, Seven Star Road. I just want to give a resident's perspective on a couple, a couple of the points. First of all, I agree with the automated collection. Labor's the driving cost. Everything's going that way, so that's all good. But I think it's almost like we're going from zero to 100, because right now, we have an unenforced two-barrel limit. You know, there's no enforcement of that whatsoever, so everyone feels they have unlimited trash. So, going from unlimited, essentially is what people feel they have, to 35 gallons, it seems like it's a big, it's a big lift. But I know we saw 16 communities up there that have the 35 gallon. Vast majority of communities around here that I, I find myself in, I have friends in, that have gone this route, they have 264s, and everyone seems pretty satisfied with that. So, I think in a community like ours, where it's, you know, pretty much a family community, you know, 264s would make a lot more sense. I understand you lose some grant money it would have you, but I think from the little bit I've talked to folks in town that I know, people seem to be in that direction. I know you have a survey out, about 200 people have responded. I think if I'm not mistaken, we have somewhere around 22, 2400 households.
Yes.
Okay? So, that's less than 10%.
Yes.
You know? So, that's kind of my thing. It's like I've seen a few of these meetings, very little bit of, I've seen very few people speak up and put a, you know, a resident's perspective to it. But that's kind of mine. Another thing I'm going to disagree with a little bit on is the equity factor of it, you know, being fair and equitable to everybody. A couple of the examples used are water, electricity. It's kind of an apple and an orange, if you ask me. Those are enterprise funds. We don't have to participate in those if we don't want, even as a resident. This is the only thing in our tax system that is going to be a pay-as-you-go. I don't pay if I call, like, I've never called the fire department or the police department to my house. I still gladly pay for that service. I don't have kids in the school anymore. I still gladly pay for that service. Nothing fair about taxes, you know? There's nothing fair about them. I mean, they're not made to be equal, even Stephen. We pay to be part of a community, and I think trash pickup is an important part of a community. It's, it's public health, you know? So, if you go to 264s, yeah, you're going to start to be able to better forecast what the volume's going to be. But I think going right down to a 35, it's, yeah, might as well go to a 25, make it buy more bags, you know? We're still paying for it. But I just think that 264s for a community like ours would make a lot more sense.
When you say 264s, I just want to clarify this.
One trash, one recycle.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we're at the 232s for trash.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand.
I talked, I talked, yeah, I talked to friends in North Andover, Muthaw, Ames, very different places, and that's what most of our
Right.
regional communities are doing.
Yes.
And it would seem that they're more our demographic. They're, they're kind of like the same people as us. If it's working there, I don't see why it doesn't work here, you know, as opposed to trying to be the trendsetter and, you know, have the smallest little barrel anyone's ever seen out the curb, you know? It's just, I'll be honest with you. I have 264s at my house. I've had my own totes. The kid loves me, you know, that dumps the trash, because he can use my barrels to tip. When my kids are away at school, I drag my 64 up. It's light.
Right.
My kids are home, their friends are at the house this week, yeah, my barrel's going to be heavy, you know? But it's, but on this week, I need the 64.
But you understand too, we're going to allow, we're, we're considering allowing for the option to lease a second
But, but again, that's just
35. So, then you could have, you would have actually more. You'd have a 96 if we went that way for recycling, plus two 35s.
Right, but I'm
All that would mean is an additional fee annually.
Right, so there's no savings to me anyway. I mean, it's like
No, but what it does, I mean, and again, I don't, I like talking to you.
Yeah, no worries at all. No, I appreciate it.
But what it does is it helps on the budget side for the unknown tonnage, that if we have, so you spoke about, you know, water is certainly enterprise. Electric is not. It's a separate electric department. But nevertheless, they have their own revenue stream is
Right.
the difference. And this would be the first step into a revenue stream that could protect trash from the override. So, let's say, you know, the school budget comes in and we can't afford it. Trash would not go on the override because it has its own little funding outside of the tax rate to take care of the tonnage. So, you know, in the past, we've thrown trash on the override a fair number of times, anytime the budget goes out of whack, because trash goes up more than 2.5%.
Sure.
Yeah.
But going to a 64, you could still have that predictability. It's just, you're giving people the option to throw the, yeah, the number's going to be a little bit higher in the, in the, in the tonnage fee, but it'll be a predictable number again. So, once you do have the 64s for the first go-around, the first year, you're going to say, okay, our tipping fee is X, you know, because you're not going to know exactly what the tipping fee of a 35 is either.
It's, it's a yes and no, because we don't know the recycling is a market-driven cost. So, it's just the idea of having a revenue stream outside the tax rate to help support this, I think, is something to think about, outside of the cart sizes.
Right, but you still theoretically have that with a 64, because if I need more than my 64, I still have to buy like I do now theoretically
The overflow.
an overflow bag. So, there's still that revenue stream, but you're giving people a more reasonable option, I think, for our environment here to handle our waste, you know? And it's just, it just seems to me that it's like we're going from zero to 100, you know? We're not like working our way to, I totally agree with, yeah, if, you know, I'm not huge, super huge on it. I try to do my part best. I bring my recycles out every week. The barrel's full. But I'll be honest with you, I'm not ready to compost and things like that. That's just not me. But I agree, hey, if you can convince more people to get on board with that, with initiatives and grants or whatever else, but, but I almost think that's like a sidebar from first, we got to get the best contract we can, because we've got to get rid of the trash.
Yeah.
And if you, and if you can get a public group that wants to push that agenda forward, that's great, if it, if it helps, you know? But I don't think by, by all of a sudden limiting everyone immediately, we're all going to become good little soldiers and, you know, start, you know, throwing our banana peels in the backyard and, you know, reducing our waste. You know, it's not going to happen. I mean, we're still going to order Amazon. We're still going to go to Best Buy. You know, we're going to generate. We're consumers, you know? So.
I appreciate your comment.
But that's just my, my thing. I think 264 is a way better option for the, for the people of Groveland.
Thank you. Did you do the survey too?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
One of 200, apparently.
Yep. Well, we're still pushing it. We're still pushing it.
Kathleen, I just want, just want to point out that our, Kathy Merz also does, I think, would like to have a comment.
Did you want to comment, Kathy? Does she hear you?
I would. I would. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi. So, I'm Kathy Merz. I'm the branch chief at Mass D E P for the municipal waste reduction program. Brian and Ron are both on my team together, and I wanted to join tonight for this conversation because I've been in their shoes for a really long time. I worked as a regional coordinator for over 20 years and have helped dozens of communities go through a process like you're going through. And I wanted to be here to offer support. And what I've heard tonight, I'm very impressed with the thoughtful process that you've all been going, going through, and the deep thinking about it and attending different meetings and talking to peer communities. I will say, you know, just a couple of very brief things from D E P's perspective is that pay-as-you-throw programs are a top priority for the state because we have decades of experience with it. Some of the first pay-as-you-throw programs came into play in the, in the 80s, in the early 90s. Those programs are still operating. So, we have such voluminous data on the high performance of those programs. They're the lowest waste generators in the state, and we know that trash is a huge cost for all of you, for all municipalities. And communities don't turn back once they go to these programs because they see demonstrably what an impact it makes on trash reduction. You see trash reduction anywhere from 25 to 50% reduction in trash. We see increases in recycling. We see residents looking for opportunities to donate items that are still reusable and connecting with other opportunities to redirect materials and items and share them and dispose a lot less. We also find that with more and more communities that have pay-as-you-throw, that those that do not sometimes, sometimes import waste. I don't know if that's happening in Groveland. I would suggest that it is, but we have seen that happen in some other communities where it's a generous tax-funded program, and sometimes waste travels to those places. So, I just really wanted to say hats off to all of you to looking at this so deeply. We consider it a best practice, pay-as-you-throw. It's a top-tier program for D E P. So, whenever a community is interested in looking at it and seeing how it could work for you, we really want to bring all our support to you, and we really open up our grants widely to really try to help you work through it. Some of the questions that have been raised tonight by select board members and the residents in the room are really common, and, and it's natural to have those questions and to be uncertain about what it's going to mean for any individual. And all of these questions can be answered because they're very common. What's it going to mean for me? Are these programs flexible? What I love about this is that the flexibility that you have if a person, a household goes over 35 gallons. Their needs might vary as their household grows, or perhaps as their household shrinks, that they may need fewer carts, or they may not need any overflow. So, that flexibility is really important. It allows for the household to have personal control over this. They have a choice. They can choose to recycle more and be mindful about how they, what they purchase. Hopefully, you have options available for recycling cardboard from all of these online shipments and things of that nature, these complimentary programs that make it very doable for people. The, we're here together. The cart size really matters because once you have that, you will have that for a long time. So, the North Andovers of the world, and the Westwoods of the world, and the Mansfields of the world, and I can name probably 50 communities off the top that have 64-gallon trash carts. Some of the communities I worked with back in the 2005 to 2008 period that did that have been asking, what do we do now? We're stuck with 64-gallon trash carts. We're stuck at this higher trash generation rate, and we need to reduce our costs. And it puts them in a difficult position. So, I, as public officials who are making decisions for your community, you want to set the right policy that will support your goals. And it sounds like your goals are really being very efficient with your, your costs, cost savings wherever possible, and to encourage waste reduction. So, that's enough from me. You've got the full staff of us here to answer questions, but I really wanted to applaud you for your work on this and know that communities that, this is the hardest part, the decision-making, and then that initial transition. And I can tell you, after a month, it all settles down, and people become used to it, and these programs work, because it's, it's happened over and over and over and over again in Massachusetts. So, we're here to support you, and feel free to ask any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any further questions from the board?
Negative.
Negative. I think, I think we're good. I appreciate you guys coming down and everything you do. We could never have gotten this far on our own, that's for sure. And I'm sure right after you leave, we'll have a lot more questions. This always happens, you know? The minute the meeting's over, you're like, oh my God, why didn't I ask that? But this is an ongoing process, so we'll definitely be in touch. I think I'll check in with Rebecca. Trash and Recycling, I think I reached out to them and asked them to meet the second Thursday in January? I'm not sure. Around there, and I'm waiting to see if everyone's available then. But we'll try and grab a meeting before the halfway point in January. That's what my goal is, so that we're lining up with the survey. Hopefully, our survey results, we can push a little harder and get more surveys and get above that 10%. I wish we could get higher. Excuse me?
Can you just say where to find it, the survey?
Well, it's on the town crier, right? It's on the town website.
Hard copies?
Do we have hard copies of it?
We have a few at town hall.
We have a few hard copies at town hall, and if you're really stuck and you can't get one, contact a member of this board, and we will get one to you, I promise you. We'll figure out a way. There, the will, where there's a will, there's a way, and we don't mind people doing it by hand, and we'll get those results keyed in. We can, we can work with whatever. The main thing is we do want to get as much feedback as possible. We really want that. So, I thank everybody, and thank you, Brian, for participating as well. And we, to add suggestion, we'll, on our next agenda, we will allow for, I don't know that you have to call it a hearing, but a public comment period on trash and recycling, and let people come in with their questions. People don't have to feel like they have the answers. You can come here with your concern, or your question, or something that you want us to think about. That's fine. We'll take notes of everything that is said, and it will all be compiled along with our survey data. Okay? And with that, we're going to move on our agenda. Thank you, and
Thank you.
Yep. Have a great holiday, huh? Yep, have a great holiday, huh? We're there. We're almost there. We're so close. The board is like so pleased. So, oh, next on the agenda, this was something I asked for, was to just put out like some green ideas, some green tips. And I'm not coming up with these by myself. I'm not that brilliant. But one tip that I heard was to upstairs in your bathroom, and I knew like if it's like my bathroom and the vanity is completely full, so a drawn-in the vanity would not be open for recyclables. But perhaps you could put a small shoebox or another small container. And there are many items that we use in our bathrooms that can be recycled. And I feel like sometimes they don't make it downstairs to the giant recycling bin. So, you know, a shoebox is not that big. You could tuck it out of the way and throw a liquid soap or shampoo containers, cardboard toilet pole, rose-tissue boxes, things like that. Just tuck it in there and then once a week, bring that back downstairs. And as Becky said, once you start to do something, it becomes a part of your routine, you continue. At first, it'll feel like weird and you'll forget. And then after a while, it becomes part of what we do, right? So anybody else, I'd like to keep the green tips on the discussion part of our agenda so that anybody who comes up with one during the week, bring it on in because I think we're all looking for ways to try and be part of the process of not throwing out as much trash and keeping this town looking pretty and green. And having the carts and the automated pickup will also be part of having our town, keeping our town looking very organized and green. And we won't have the, the blowing of trash from the short bins anymore. So I feel like we're on a really good path and anybody's ideas on how we can do more are always welcome. So next is a licensed non-renewal certification. Review and confirmation of non-renewal status of Jerry's Variety Wine and Malt License. Note, the board approved their all-alcohol license on December ninth, two thousand twenty-four. So has everybody had time to review that in the agenda packet? And do we have questions or discussion on it?
I guess I was just wondering what happens? What's the protocol for that?
So essentially, they had applied for an all-alcohol license because there was none available at that particular point in time. So, excuse me, they first applied for a wine and malt. And then when a license became available, they did an all-alcoholic license. And therefore, they, during their switch-over, because once they go through the local licensing authority, which would be the select board, you then have to go through the ABCC on the state level. So sometimes there's a switch-over, like we currently approve the Fairways license transfer. But we also just approved the renewal for the Fairways with the current owner because the ABCC hadn't yet approved it on their level. So the same thing kinda happened with this particular situation. So they approved, they renewed both at the same time last year. And so this year, they're saying, well, now we don't need to worry about it because we now have our all-alcoholic beverage. So we no longer need that wine malt license. So they're not renewing it. And per the ABCC guidelines, we need to sign a non-renewal so that they know that they're not renewing that license. Then that gets put back into our quota because the quota is based on the population. So now we have another wine malt license available if there was another establishment that wanted to proceed with that license.
Okay.
So it's really just a formality at this point. They are still operating. You did still renew it. We did still issue their license, but only for the all-alcoholic beverage.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
So I would need a motion to approve the licensed non-renewal certification.
Sounds confusing. I'll make a motion. We approve the licensed non-renewal certification for Jerry's Variety Wine and Malt Liquors License.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous with one absent?
You forgot number four.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Yes, Rebecca was very excited to talk about it.
Getting mad this way. It's always the middle one. One of the ones in the middle. So yes, we do have item four. It's our FY twenty-six capital improvement plan, which is worthy. And definitely didn't wanna overlook that. So we'll move on to that. And has everybody had time to look through it all? And there's a nice, I think, one-page spreadsheet that kinda itemizes it by year. I'm just looking for it quickly. I know some of it was the public safety doors, I believe, for FY twenty-six. And some of it is further on.
Page sixty-two on the PDF, if that helps.
Yep, I know. There's so many pages. I had it broken into pieces for some of this meeting, but not that piece because it was small. Almost there. Almost there. Oh, no pages. Almost. Got it?
Don't go past it.
About... I haven't gone past it. It's after page throw. Yep, right there. Okay. So are we actually voting on this tonight or just discussing this tonight?
So it's up to the board. I did provide a comprehensive document that is quite lengthy. So I'm not sure if you want to take a vote on it this evening or if you would like to wait until the next meeting, our first meeting in January. But it's essentially the same document that was presented last year with a couple of updates in terms of any of the changes that we've seen from the prior fiscal year. So we have new vehicles and equipment that are added. I have updated the free cash numbers, the stabilization numbers, showing you the trends, detailed some of the community preservation funds that have been utilized in order to help offset some of the costs that we have for other projects and capital improvements in, in the town. I've also included grants that we've received that are over the threshold and meet the qualifications of a SIP project, so, excuse me, CIP project. So if there's something specific that you wanna ask about that document or if you, again, wanna take some time and review it, like the chairwoman said, I did put in a snapshot of the capital improvement plan as a whole, just so that you can see from a monetary standpoint. And at a prior meeting, we did discuss some of the projects that we were gonna put forward for the fiscal year twenty-six for the town meeting warrant, utilizing free cash reserves. The only thing that I wanted to highlight as part of the capital improvement plan is that last year, we had put forward a highway garage improvement. So that was something that was done as part of the superintendent. He was very passionate about trying to get some monies and to rehabilitate the garage. Since his departure and speaking with the foreman and the new projects and programs managers, that's not exactly the most ideal approach in terms of what the highway yard needs. That particular building could actually serve as storage for some of the newer equipment that we have. And it would protect some of the new vehicles that we have from the elements and to keep that intact. And we could make a couple of smaller repairs. The back end has been raised off the ground, but the side portions have not. So it's exposed to salt and things of that nature, which is causing it to erode. But if we were to cut that out and kinda raise it a little bit, we could actually prevent that from moving further. But a former roadway commissioner had put forward a plan to do a highway garage. I think it was in the early nineties and he had done some initial design plans as part of that. So in talking again with the foreman, as well as the projects and programs manager, the monies that were allocated for the garage could be reallocated at town meeting for further design and permitting for the potential to move forward with that project. And so that would be something that we would like to propose if, in fact, the town meeting wanted to continue in that direction to explore options. Given the day where, you know, we have MS four requirements, wash bays. We have sewer running through one fifty Center Street now, so there's an ability to connect a sewer. There's a lot of other amenities that could be offered utilizing that particular property that we're not taking advantage of because I think that the former roadway commissioner really saw an opportunity and tried to capitalize on it as best as he could and did the best that he could at that particular point in time with the funds he had available. So this would just kinda make it more of a comprehensive plan so that if the town wanted to move forward in the future, we could do so. So that's one of the other things that's highlighted as part of the plan that we can discuss further or now or at the next meeting, as well as the conversation about the trash carts. And that was something that we had talked about originally. And to answer Select Board Watson's question about, you know, whether or not that money was going to be put back into the budget, the thought process was that we're currently in a contract with waste management. And we're currently in that contract for fiscal year twenty-six. And there's an opportunity to open up that contract to move towards an automated system. So we could take advantage of the fact that we're gonna have to allocate that money, no matter what, towards waste management. We can use that money to purchase the carts and then we could then lower the amount of monies that we would have to spend on purchasing the carts with free cash. That would be a great use of the monies because they're already gone, they're already allocated because we're signed into a contract. So for this particular fiscal year, if we were to move forward with that, those funds would go towards the purchase of the carts so that everyone had the carts available to them, lowering the cost that we would need to allocate from free cash or other reserves in order to move forward with an automated pickup. So that's also mentioned in the document as well. And I have an estimated figure based upon working with two contractors as to what that would cost. I did use the ninety-six gallon as a, as a number. I just figured it would be best to estimate higher in that regard. But it is before you and that would be something that we would need to allocate another reserve fund to cover half of that. So I'm happy to take any questions or highlight some of the projects that we had talked about previously for putting forward for the capital improvement plan for this year. I think standard would be the Cruiser. That's something that we would like to put into the budget, but it's not been something that we've been able to achieve because it is a reoccurring expense and it's something that we, we replace every year in terms of our fleet management for the police. The other was the shelving replacement over at the library. We had allocated about twenty thousand dollars, which we actually moved forward just recently with some of the shelves. And we had planned to make that a phased approach. So we'd buy a certain amount one year and then we'd buy another amount the next year instead of just buying them all together. And then the other project was the asphalt hot box. That was something that was recently requested this year. I guess we had been borrowing in other communities and it just doesn't work out all the time. And it would make it far easier for the highway department to do what they need to do and be more flexible. They've also requested a track loader. That was something that was on the capital improvement plan last year and was expected to be funded this year. So they made the request again. So we put that on for funding for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. And as you saw at another meeting, we did have the facilities manager over at the Pennsyl County Regional School come in and he discussed a little bit of the priorities for the Bagnell Elementary School. So you'll see that we had put forward some of the suggestions that they had made, such as the library carpet removal and tile, room thirty-three and thirty-one, the computer lab carpet removal and tile, and then to continue on with our asbestos abatement initiatives within the school. So overall, we were looking at funding a capital budget for fiscal year twenty-six at three hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and one dollars.
So I guess the question is, do board members want to take this under advisement and read the bigger document? Or do you want to give, you know, preliminary approval to this list of projects for the FY twenty-twenty-six budget? I mean, the budget's gonna be coming out, so I mean, it's kind of time to decide what's gonna be in the budget. So I think that this is the recommended list for twenty-twenty-six. I don't think we lose anything by voting to go ahead with it. And you can always revise your votes later on if you find that a project doesn't measure up or if there's some other need that prioritizes over it. But this is not the biggest capital outlay that I've ever seen. In fact, it's, it's fairly conservative capital outlay for our town. It's not a large amount of money. I mean, it's large, but not for us really. You know what I'm saying? I've seen a lot higher numbers. This is, this is very reasonable.
I mean, I think we should move forward with it.
Okay, we'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty-six, twenty-six recommended capital projects.
All right, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the fiscal year twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six capital improvement plan.
I'll second that.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
No, I mean...
There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? And what do you need from us on the larger document? Do you want us to just still keep it under advisement or do you need further input from us?
It's really up to the board. It gives you, again, a more comprehensive outlook in terms of our, our reserves and how we use them and other funding mechanisms. As you see, the Salem Street Dam is on that list. It doesn't have a specific year. We'd like it to, to get done tomorrow, but it's not necessarily something that, you know, we have as part of either our capital stabilization, our stabilization, or even with our free cash. It's just not enough monies without depleting everything. So there are other things that we call out in that document about Mass Works grants and other grants that can help us find funding sources to help move forward with those projects. So I think it can be really informative and I think it gives you a snapshot in terms of our technology, our property, all the different things that we have here in Groveland that we need to be responsible for. And it does talk a little bit too about, you know, Vizi Memorial Park, that is a town-owned building, Little Red Schoolhouse, Washington Hall. We do have leases. We do have the Conservation Commission and they have revolving funds that do try and help support those buildings and those structures and those properties. But again, that is town property. So ultimately, if they're unable to take care of those properties or something happens, it, it is the town's responsibility to, to figure out exactly what they wanna do. And it could be to do nothing, but again, to not be mindful of what we have, I think, is, is, is just the wrong approach, I think, to make sure that we know what those buildings need, how they're being maintained, making sure that those lists are included as part of our capital plan. It does make it easier to say, you know what, if you wanna do something, we, we know what to do instead of like, well, I, I have no idea. We, we didn't plan for this. So I think, you know, even that conversation as part of the document is, is important as well. So I think that if the board could take a closer look at it and, and vote at the next meeting to either to move forward or to adopt that plan in addition to the projects, I think it would be a, a way to outline that that is the pathway forward for the community. And I welcome any changes or edits or anything of that nature. It is a fluid document. It is a blueprint. It is ever-changing. It's also very similar to what we had last year in terms of some of the, you know, the mundane information. This is, you know, this is a municipal bond, like, but it gives you some insight into what those are and what, how they can be utilized.
Right, so that, that sounds all right to everybody. We'll put it on our next agenda then. That we'll be adopting the capital plan or questioning it and making revisions as needed. But, and again, it's not fixed in stone. It's, it's gonna be a changing document. So it can come back again. And of course, as, as situations change, it changes. But we have to start somewhere, I would think, yes. Okay, so we will do that for next agenda then.
We'll deal with that next year.
Ah, you had to get that in there.
I had to. I'll hold on to that one for a while.
You were waiting for that. Just waiting for the right place to put it in.
You even had it written down.
Did you have it written down?
I know, I almost screwed it up too.
Okay, so next we have appointments and resignations. And we have a resignation from Linda Brown from the Council on Aging, effective December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
What are we on, number seven?
Yes.
Make a motion. We accept the resignation of Linda Brown from the Council on Aging, effective December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay.
With regrets. She, she did a good job.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, so thank you, Linda, for her service and accept with regrets. All in favor? It's unanimous and one absent. Okay, and appoint Carol Funcheon, did I say that correctly, Funcheon? To the Groveland Cultural Council, effective December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four.
Let me... Doesn't indicate that she's, she's a town resident, is she, do you know?
She is. I believe so.
Yes, she is.
I'll make a motion. We appoint Carol Funcheon, is that how you say it?
I said Funcheon, yeah.
To the Groveland Cultural Council, effective December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? There being none, all in favor? It's unanimous with one absent. Okay, next on, we have our minutes from November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Have we had a chance to review those for approval?
They look to be in order. I'll move for passage.
Second that.
Okay, any discussion? There being none, I'll ask for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous with one absent. Any older unfinished business? Okay, any items not reasonably anticipated at time of posting? I'm not aware of any. And town administrator time?
Did we miss five under questionable vote?
No, I did the green tips. Don't you remember my shoebox? You didn't...
Was I supposed to laugh?
Yeah, maybe, but that's all right. You don't need to smile. It's fine. It's town administrator time.
Thank you. So I don't have much. As you can see, it's a little light this time. So we really have been focusing on the budget book, requested due by the end of the month. But then it really comes down to me to kinda put everything together and to assemble to contribute to both the finance board as well as the select board. So I'm hoping to get that done sooner rather than later in terms of...
So I'm hoping to get that done sooner rather than later, in terms of the beginning of January. I think the biggest challenge so far has been, again, the revenue forecasting, not exactly knowing what, you know, the state aid is going to be, not exactly knowing what the Penntucket Regional School assessment is going to be, the Whittier assessment is going to be, some of the items that I don't necessarily have at my fingertips, which could be changing and could be detrimental to our budget, but I am trying to do the best that I can with what I do have. I know that we did receive the Essex Regional Retirement Appropriation Letter the other day. Last year, we saw a significant increase. Thankfully, this year, we're looking at about a 2% increase, which is much better, obviously, than the 11, if not more, that we experienced last fiscal year. But other than that, I haven't really necessarily seen any final numbers come through. Trash, we're budgeting as we would, if we were to move forward as we are now with our current contract, but again, hopefully, we can get those numbers finalized and over to the finance board as well as the select board. We are using ClearGov again this year, so that you will expect to see that in a virtual format, but you will also be able to have that in print copy, and also the residents at home will be able to follow along, and we will be updating the versions of the book or of the budget in the book as things move along. For field use and property use permits, I have none that we were issued. For important upcoming dates, I just wanted to remind everybody that Town Hall will be closed tomorrow at 12:00 PM, and then we will be closed on Wednesday, the 25th, but we will be back in the office on Thursday. Also, Town Hall will be closed on Wednesday, January 1st, in the observance of New Year's Day, and then also again on Monday, 20th, for the Martin Luther King Day holiday. And then to remind everybody that we have that housing workshop, workshop with and his associates that we've been working for, the 3A and ADUs, and that's on January 30th at 6:30 PM here at Town Hall. For grants, just to let the board know that the Police Department has applied for the fiscal year 2025 Emergency Medical Dispatch Grant. This helps offset the cost for EMD services that are provided to the town by Trinity Pride Star. We've had a great working relationship with them, so hopefully we'll be successful and we'll be able to move forward for procurement. Contract 2025-9, we procured the shelves for the library, that was approved as part of the fiscal year '25 Capital Improvement Plan. Hopefully, those will be in, and we will be able to work with our facilities supervisor to get them installed over at the library. Contract 2025-12, we also procured services for the installation of the HVAC unit, that's going to be in the cable equipment room over here at Town Hall, but we are utilizing PEG access funds for that as part of the cable move that happened in this room into the back meeting room. And then lastly, contract 2025-13, so we did sign plow contracts for the plow season that will end May 1st, 2025, Derek Devu and Ryan Janren. For technical review conferences, there was none. Community preservation project updates, you've seen that they were working on the Shanahan Field, but there's really, with the weather turn, probably not going to be much going on. And then I have the meetings and events seminars, whatnot, that have happened in the last two weeks. If there's anything specific, I'm happy to elaborate, but that's just a general list.
Okay, so we're done with that, we're up to select board timing reports. Ed?
Yeah, last Monday, Community Preservation Committee met, we had a presentation from Stuart Saginaw, Executive Director of Community Preservation Coalition. He spoke on the rules and regulations of CPA funds, the proper use of the CPA funds, and how to determine if projects meet CPA requirements with a lengthy presentation, and I think everybody learned something out of it.
Good, has the deadline passed now for people to submit their projects, or is it still ongoing?
No, we haven't done any projects yet, just get the word out there.
So can people still submit projects? Are we still open? Rebecca's nodding her head, I was just curious, the deadline, when is the deadline?
The end of the month.
End of this month?
Correct.
Oh, okay, okay, good, thanks. Okay, anything else said?
I'm all set.
Okay, Mark?
I'm all good.
You're all set?
I'm good, I can't talk, so...
You can't talk. Okay, Becky?
My, just more, not too serious, but for those that celebrate, happy winter solstice, happy Hanukkah, merry Christmas, happy Gwanza, happy New Year, happy, anything else I've missed, and just cheers to 2025.
I know.
Right?
Turning the page, yes. I was invited to a meeting at the Penntucket Regional School District, Rebecca, I think I've, so it's just, I think, three of us going to meet with Dr. Bartholomew, one member from each town select board I'm envisioning, is that it?
That's my understanding, I think that he was just looking to find a way to better communicate with the communities and had not explored that option, so that's kind of how it was presented to me. I didn't really have any more details, other than the fact that he was just looking to get a better understanding of how the boards operated, and bringing back information to the boards, and presenting information to the boards, and just the general communication standpoint.
Well, so is there anything from any of you, the meeting is on the 13th, and there'll be one member from Merrimack and one from West Newbury, and me, it's just for an hour, I believe, based on time constraints of all of us. Is there anything from you that you'd like me to forward to Dr. B's? No?
No, I know you have Penntucket on, like, you're checking everything twice.
Yeah, kind of know them.
Yeah, trust what you find out.
Okay, so I just wanted to, because again, that meeting, just the thing came up, I reached out to Rebecca to see what it was for, and I think she just explained, another reach-out communication device, which is always a good idea. I did notice the wreath on the back wall has become really festive, and I wanted to thank the students, children, and the child librarian, is that, who is the youth librarian, for doing such a beautiful job with it? It's really nice and it's pretty, and that wall needed something, for sure. Under correspondence, we have Whittier Regional Vocational Technical School letter and National Grid's 2025 Annual Operational Plan. I'd like to take the opportunity to wish everybody and their families a healthy and happy holiday and New Year. I always liked to have time with family, now my kids are grown, I still look at them as kids, and they don't think that way, but it's always good to see everybody and the extended family, so best wishes to everybody in the community, slow down for a little while, and have some fun, you know, and we'll see you next year. Had to say it. At that point, I think everything's been covered, unless I've missed something else? No? Okay, not too bad. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Our next meeting is Monday, January the 6th.
Make a motion to adjourn at 8:06, 7?
7, that's good.
I'll second that.
We'll go with 7.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous, we're adjourned. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.